Now, I never know, if you watch the show, you know every time we start, I never know when the sling studio starts, so I start, we're probably live already.
Okay.
But I kind of fill in a little space here because I never know when it actually kicks on. Hello, God bless and welcome. I'm Kevin Hagerty and this is the God Logic Project where we discuss maintaining a Christian worldview in a post-Christian America. Today, we have a very interesting, very emotional topic. I've got some local leaders in the protecting parents from, or representing the parents in the debate over the LGBTQ in the school system. This is a touchy, emotional topic. These folks are on the front lines of this, representing parents on the front lines of this debate. So it's going to be a tough conversation, important conversation. Want you guys to stay in touch with us here. Stay tuned in. Later on in the show, we're going to turn the phones on, you'll be able to call in and speak into the situation. Stay with us. But first, the intro music. Hello, God bless and welcome. I'm Kevin Hagerty and this is the God Logic Project.
Shut up, Kevin.
I'm Kevin Hagerty and as always, that's Mike Houston telling me to shut up. In studio today are a couple of folks, one person I've known for a while, one person I just met. They are representing kind of the parent's side of the people of Pasco County. They're representing the people and the parents of Pasco County on the LGBTQ clubs in Pasco County schools. And it's strange that they would need representation, but they do and we're going to explain why. So I have some good folks in the studio here. Please, if you like what we talk about, give it a thumbs up. If you don't like it, give it a thumbs down. In either case, feel free to comment. I will try, I will read every comment. I'll try to reply to every comment during the week. And if you would, subscribe to the God Logic Project. There's anything I can do for you. If you'd like to contact me personally, godlogicproject@gmail.com. There's any way we can help. If I don't have the resources to do it, I'll try to find the resources to do it for you, help you help yourself in that case. In the meantime, in studio, I have Terry. Terry, introduce yourself.
Sure. My name is Terry Kemble and I've been active in really standing up for Judeo-Christian principles in the halls of government for about 25 years. Before that, I was, I am still, I'm in recovery, but I'm an alcoholic, I'm a drug addict, I'm a sex addict. So fortunately, in 1986, God freed me from those things. Jesus Christ entered my heart and changed my life. But because of that experience and because what I saw it do, not just to me, but to those around me, my family, my former wife, my children, God used that experience to put me in the position I'm in now. So that's what I do. I advocate for Judeo-Christian principles in the halls of government.
And that is, that is kind of what the God Logic Project is about. So we want to have a conversation where we can have, we can still maintain a Christian worldview, yet function and be part of the conversation in society. And we talked a little bit about it before the show, but I believe Christianity is underrepresented or in the conversation itself. So the conversation generally is controlled by people that are more liberal and more on the left. And that's fine, so long as it doesn't become an intellectual bubble where there is no civil discourse back and forth. And that's kind of what the God Logic Project is about. Gloriana, tell us a little bit about yourself.
Hi, my name is Gloriana Kirk and I'm here as a parent. I'm, me and my husband together have six children, five daughters and a two-year-old son. So I'm here as a parent representing hopefully a majority of the parents here in Pasco that want to protect the innocence of our children. You know, as they're in the Pasco County schools, we don't think they should be indoctrinated. We think they should be educated with truth and facts. And that isn't what's happening. Ideologies and political activism is creeping its head into our schools and parents aren't aware of what's going on. So my goal is to inform parents and have us stand up so we can protect our children against this.
Okay, so we'll backpedal a little bit and explain to me, I know a little bit of your story, Gloriana, Terry and I just met today, but the, explain to me what's going on in the Pasco County schools that would even require parents to organize to protect their own rights?
Well, we've broken it down into three separate areas. One is they have after-school clubs, LGBTQ after-school clubs, that children from 11 years old till 18 can join after-school without parental notification or parental consent. So they don't believe that parents need to know if their children are attending these clubs. Also, the school has adopted some guidelines. The superintendent Browning has put in that follow along the LGBTQ ideology and the, you know, this gender dysphoria that we have growing amongst our children and in our culture. So they're letting boys use the girls' restrooms if they feel like they're a girl and girls use the boys' restrooms and locker rooms and showers, you know, if, you know, they feel like the opposite sex. And they're doing this without, you know, there's no...
Input from the parents?
Right, there's no input.
The parents aren't allowed to speak into this, is that true?
There's no light being shone on it. Most parents don't know that it's happening. We have been gathering petitions and we've had people standing in front of the Port Ritchie Government Building, getting people who were coming to deal with the government to sign the petitions. And the people read the petition and it tells what the Pasco County School District is doing and they say, "What?
Yeah.
They're not doing that. No, they can't be doing that. They're doing that." The fact is that they've kept it as much in the dark as they could, as they do with a lot of the things that they do because they feel that they know better how our kids should be raised than we do.
And that is, that becomes for me, the scary part. So for parents, like for me, I heard, if I hear about this and I, and my kids do not struggle with gender identity, so it's easier of course for me to say it than somebody whose kids do. But I hear this and I say, "Well, my kids don't go to that club." But you're telling me I might not know if my kids go to that club, say to support a friend or just maybe because, you know, of social pressure that it's cool now to support this lifestyle. So then you're telling me that if I call up the school board and say, "Do you have this club and is my kid attending this club?", they may not have to tell me, their policy is not to tell me that he or she might be even attending it. Is that true?
They probably wouldn't know whether your child was attending or not because they don't keep track of that. And they're refusing to do consent forms, which would keep a roll call with children that were consented to join the club. So I think they wouldn't know that your child was in there, you know? Are they monitoring that? Are they keeping track of which children are in there? I don't think so.
Well, how are they, how are they being held to account at all outside of your two organizations?
Let me back up to what, to add a little bit to what Gloriana just said. Her experience was that she saw a flyer in the school that advertised the club. She actually went to leadership in the school to say, "What is this about?" And they said, "Oh, we don't have a club like that." She had to fight just to find out there was actually a club like that in the school.
So they, when you went, in their school, there was a club and you asked about it in Pasco County and they said, "That club doesn't even exist." But you're holding the flyer saying, "Meet Thursday at 4:00" or whatever the flyer said for this topic.
Yeah, I said, "I know the club exists because, you know, we saw the flyers at the open house." So it's been, it's been over a year now since that happened.
And you are, by the way, folks, so you know, Gloriana started Protect Pasco Children. You're the founder of that movement, of that organization, right?
Right.
And that has been well over a year ago, I think. It's been a while since you've been at this. I've been kind of really on the sidelines, you know, for the most part, but...
Yes, I've been working with Terry with Community Issues Council the whole time. And so as, as we were brainstorming on what would be the best way to grab people's attention, to inform all the parents, because our goal is to inform the parents so that they can make those decisions, you know, for themselves. Because these, these guidelines and these policies that the school has put in place go against, you know, personally, my beliefs and how I want my children to raise and what I'm telling them is right and wrong. And we should be able to trust our schools to send our children there to get an education and not be indoctrinated by somewhat, what someone else believes is right and wrong.
And that is, that's what it comes down to for me. So I will teach my kids morality, right and wrong, and in my case, with a Christian worldview. But I, and then I only expect them to teach them ABCs and 1, 2, 3s, which I also, with Common Core, am very involved in, doing homework and I, because I got to show them the way I knew how to do it, right?
That's right.
But it seems to me that there is a totalitarianism to this, that it, the mindset is, is parents don't know as well as we know because this is what we do. That's very dangerous. So only one side of the conversation is ever represented, I would say, in any of these closed-door meetings or how they, how they tend to organize these things. And we thought, or I was under the impression that these rules were going to kind of be rewritten and then you send me the rewritten rules and it sounds just like the old rules, just shorter.
Well, a couple of things in that, Kevin, let me respond again back to what you asked and Gloriana answered about the foundation of Protect Pasco Children. So what happened is in 2016, the Obama administration through the Department of Justice and the Department of Education said to every public school in America, "You have to allow boys who think they're girls to share the showers and restrooms with the girls." And the same with girls who think they're boys. You have to allow, or else you're going to lose public funding. Well, that was, that was, I mean, complete government overreach and that was the thing that viscerally motivated a lot of people to begin getting involved in this whole issue. At that time, Community Issues Council, which is the ministry that I lead, we started the Protect Our Children Project. And we started in Hillsborough County because that happens to be where I live and where the biggest constituency is for CIC. We mustered about 250 people that went to a school board meeting. We had about 35 pastors. They signed up to speak and they spoke to the school board. And many of the pastors said, "Yes, and we've got a congregation of 100 or 500 or 1,000." The executive director of the Tampa Bay Baptist Association said, "We've got about 135,000 people who are going to hear what's being said today." Well, they pulled the item from the agenda because the church stood up and spoke up and people got together and said, "We need to do something about this." Well, it's beginning to creep back in, but I'm to come forward now. So once this happened in Pasco County, this issue with the bathrooms really, and with the clubs and the bathrooms, I was invited to come and help with some grassroots organizing. And we started, and Gloriana was really the one who came up with the name Protect Pasco Children. So now we've got something going on in Pinellas County as well. It's Protect Pinellas Children. So we've got Protect Hillsborough Children, Protect Pasco Children, Protect Pinellas Children under the Protect Our Children Project.
Right.
It's all the same thing. It's the government, those people who think that they know more than parents know, trying to force us to allow them to teach our kids things that we don't think are right. Now, there are certainly parents who say, "Okay, this is fine." But there are a lot of parents who, if they knew what was being taught, what was, and I know we're not really talking about sex ed here, but you had mentioned something about sex ed. I think that there's certain things that kids should know, but when you get off the chain, when you get really out of bounds, that's wrong. But the government says, and when I say the government, the school board people are politicians. They are the government. When they say, "We're going to teach your kids this or that," they don't even really say it, they just do it. Okay, they say among themselves, "We're going to do this," and then they do it. Parents don't know. And unless the kids bring something home, they're not going to know.
That then becomes the importance of this conversation. So I sit here and I think to myself, "Well, my kids wouldn't attend that or I would not give them permission to attend that anyway." If there was an issue of gender confusion, if they suffered with that and struggled with that, I would go, I would certainly begin to get them help for that. But that, I don't think personally, the answer to this problem is to, is to celebrate it. And in fact, I think they make it, they can make it so attractive to these kids who are by far the most vulnerable among us are teenagers, right? And kids just entering puberty, very, very tough time. It was a tough time for me, probably a tough time for everyone. That is a very vulnerable population. Now, how does, how do they justify not having a, well, has, in Pasco or Pinellas, has this been open to public discussion at all or is this something all internal? Have they ever brought it up as one of those topics at a school board meeting?
We've been petitioning the school board for over a year now, asking them to bring it, put it on the agenda, let's have a workshop, let's have an open discussion, let's let the community come in and just have both sides talk about it. Because I believe we can come up with solutions that respect everybody's beliefs and the rights of every individual and especially the privacy rights and the safety of our kids. But they just sit there, they've actually, when we started this, the public speaking was at the beginning of every school board meeting. Well, what they've done is they've pushed us to the end of every school board meeting. So now they, they record the meetings and then when it comes to public comment, they shut off the cameras. You know, most people that are there for agenda issues, they get up and leave, so it's an empty meeting. They just basically...
Yeah, the only ones left are you.
Right. And so, and they refuse, they've refused, all of them, to do anything about it. The few that have responded, they'll say, you know, "I may not agree with this, but these are the day and times that we live in now." But they're not willing to have a discussion and how can we respect everybody's rights?
Well, and, well, people that listening to this and a percentage of the people listening to this are going to just say that you're homophobes or that you're fundamentalist Christians, that you're, you're out of touch, that...
We've heard it all.
Yeah, I bet. Well, the, I hear it all. It turns out, I'm not Christian enough for some people and too Christian for other people. So hitting that perfect balance isn't easy, even within the church. But the, what, what do you think, if you were going to put forth a suggestion in a public hearing, what's best for the kids? And certainly, I think there's no argument that parents should be part of this conversation. And people, by the way, making that argument should, we should be very cautious of those folks. So the school board and anybody that says, "Parents of these children should not have input into this," that's, that's North Korea. That's China. That's not the United States of America. That is insanity.
Well, so they're far more subtle than that, okay? They're not going to say, "We don't want parents involved." They're going to say, "We want parents involved." But at every opportunity, they do things that are going to keep parents from being involved.
Right. Give me an example of that. What does that mean?
What she just said.
Changing the time of the...
Changing the time, well, also, I mean, they, so the, first of all, there was a 70-page guide on how this, this policy, they don't call it a policy, it's a procedure. So what that means, because it's a procedure, they can implement it without it having to go to the school board for a vote. If it doesn't go for a vote, there's no need for a public hearing. So that's part of the way that they sneak not just this, but other garbage in there that people knew about. So that's part of what we've been saying. Let's have a workshop on it, let's have an agenda item so there can be public comments so people will know. So as, when this started, there was like a 70-page guide that was the LGBT Best Practices Guide. Well, it had so much stuff in it that was wrong, that was a lie, that was mischaracterization, that they took it away because then nobody could look behind the, you know, behind the curtain and see, see, these are the kinds of lies that you're telling. So they put it in one sheet. Well, if it's in one sheet, they should send it home to every parent. So every parent can see what they're going to do, but they're not going to do that.
Is this not all public information or can they, can they, do they have a right to privacy within the school board? And who's paying for all this? Is this our tax, just tax dollars or their private funding for this?
Well, we just spoke to a couple of teachers that, you know, attend, teach at Pasco County schools and would be involved in implementing these procedures. And neither one of them have got any notification of this. And they said their colleagues haven't either. They believe that nobody really knows about this. So what happens is when, when it's time to implement this, then, you know, that certain teacher is pressed to implement it without any support. So there's no training behind this, there's no notification of the children that would be sharing a locker room. Like this happened last year, which brought a lot of attention, right after I got involved, was there was a PE teacher at Chasco Middle School who refused to monitor a 14-year-old girl who would be, who they were allowing to change in the boys' locker room. He suggested that the, the boys' parents be notified and, you know, they told him he was not allowed to notify any parents about this. He refused to go in and monitor her because it was against, you know, his beliefs and what he felt was right. And the boys came running out.
I wouldn't do it either. That's weird.
Well, it is. And you, I mean, look at it from a, from a different perspective. If that teacher was watching a 14-year-old girl undress on his computer, he would be arrested for child pornography.
Yeah, and that would make the news.
And they want him to go in the gym.
Right.
To monitor her in the shower room.
That, so people know, that, that episode that she just referred to did make the news here and it did make, it didn't make, it didn't get as much coverage as you would expect, but then I would not expect them to cover something so politically hot. That is, if it was a, if it was a more conservative issue, they would have blown this situation out of the water. But because it's a progressive leftist situation, they mention it and they put it away and let's not try to talk about this anymore. And that's when I became familiar with it. And the, the, from there, the, it just gets more insane. So this guy was reprimanded for not wanting to watch a 13-year-old girl in the locker room with the 14, 13-year-old boys or whatever the age is. He didn't lose his job, but he was reprimanded for, for saying no, basically. Is that true?
So, and, and the reality of it is, his job was threatened, his teacher's credentials were threatened, but they've kept that quiet too. So now the superintendent, who was not in the meeting where he was threatened, who was not in the locker room when the boys ran out because the girl was in there, is calling him a liar.
So the, let's look at this, we're going to look, we're going to look at what the one public form that I've seen released on this topic. And you guys, read this along with us, we're going to put it on the screen and you tell me what you think. In the meantime, if you would, subscribe, share the channel, like if you like what we're talking about, dislike if you don't, and thumbs down if you don't. Comment in any case. Want you guys to be part of this conversation. And with that in mind, we're going to open up the phones in a little bit so you'll be able to call in, come online, come on the air live and speak into it in just a few minutes. The other thing is, if you, if you don't get through right away, please, just keep trying. We'll get to as many people as we can for the live call-in. But this form here is what, and they'll be able to see this on the screen, guys, so you, I'll make it larger so we can see it. But this is the form that I've seen. This is their new policy, which resembles, as far as I can tell, the old policy that I read. It's just a little more condensed. But this is, this is, this is kind of their policies on this issue. And this, I think, is what would, what would be bothering parents. So this is the Pasco County Schools' policy on the LGBT issue and the students within the school. Students will be addressed by their name and pronouns that correspond with their gender identity. So right away, if we, if I refer to a young man as a man instead of a woman, they, that could be an issue on campus, right? We know in Canada that it is now considered hate speech and you could be fined or jailed for mispronouncing somebody or using their, their, what they call their dead name. So the name that they, that they were born with, if you, if I call Bruce Jenner Bruce Jenner, I could be in Canada arrested for calling Bruce Jenner Bruce instead of Caitlyn Jenner. So they, they want you to use the proper pronouns, which is a big issue right now. Information about a student's gender identity, sex assigned at birth, and that is a big line right there. The doctors, in my opinion, don't assign a sex at birth, a gender at birth, but they either are born with...
The knowledge.
Yeah, they either born male or female and they make a note of it on the, on the birth certificate. So they are not arbitrarily assigned a sex or gender at birth, which is, right away, the verbiage they use can be, is concerning. Or sexual orientation is confidential under FERPA. And I'm not even going to bother figuring out what FERPA is. It's something, it's a policy of some sort.
And that's a lie, by the way, just so you know, that's flatly a lie.
What is a lie?
About FERPA.
What is FERPA?
It's...
Should I know what FERPA is?
Well, it's, it's a federal regulation that protects student information from exposure without parental consent.
Right, so it would be like the medical one.
Well, they use it to, so in that thing, it says, this, okay, this doesn't, this summary, which is really what this is, doesn't specifically say it, but in the 70-page guide, it said multiple times that teachers and staff were not to inform parents about our student's gender, our sexual confusion if the student didn't give them permission to do it. So the student was in control. And they use this FERPA as the rationale for doing that. Or at least that's how, that's, they subtly try to make FERPA the rationale for that. Well, the fact is, FERPA doesn't say that at all. FERPA says that a parent is entitled to every, every bit of information in the student's dossier until the student becomes 18 and then it becomes the student's...
And that makes sense. So I would say that a college student, you might have some legal grounds to stand on, but for a child under 18 that can't enter a contract anyway, that the parents would then be their, their advocate, their legal advocate in that case, I would guess, naturally. And, and so you're saying this is not the case. Then the, to go on, "All Pasco school employees should respect the dignity and rights of individuals by adhering to their professional standards." Little vague, but okay. "The principles of professional conduct for educating professionals in Florida and school board policies when addressing confidentiality concerns." So that is, that is what it is. And that is very vague verbiage for what they're, what they may or may not even be saying. Dress code, students have the right to dress, to dress and clothing that is consistent with their gender identity and expression. Probably okay, a little bit with that. I mean, if you, if you want to, you want to. As long as it meets the rules of parents set forth in the Pasco County Schools' Code of Conduct. So you still have to dress, you can't be dressed provocatively or, or anything like that, even though it might be a boy in a, in girls' clothes or vice versa. But still, that's, I think, between the parents and the, and the child, right?
Well, they, they also use that kind of language to expand that, to then say, "Okay, teachers and staff can also dress how they want," depending on the gender ideology that they are involved with.
And that would be, again, I would have a little more problem with that, but that is the government. And, and I would go, I'd probably play the parents need to have this conversation with their kids too. And it's not, we don't want to make a, create a situation or contribute to a situation that already exists where only the government is speaking into these kids' lives and that the parents aren't. And we talked a little bit off the air, I'm probably a little more critical of parents than everybody, than some people, but I think that, that, that once you become a parent, that becomes your main job. So if you're a plumber or a pastor or a candlestick maker, that's how you earn a living, but your job is to raise well-adjusted, healthy children. And I think we're losing society that way, but that's probably another podcast. Go ahead.
And I, I don't want to hog the mic here, but there's, you, the things that you've just said bring, this is really a key point. This whole, this whole thing is meant to entice children into this whole ideology. So we had a, there was a workshop the other day and they were talking about a study they had done. It's called YRBS Youth Risk Behavior Survey in Pasco County. And they had done a specifically a Pasco County one for about 1,400 kids. And of those 1,400 kids, 20% identified as being somewhere in the LGBTQ spectrum, okay? 20%. Now, in the general population, that percent is under 5%. So what happens when they do this and when they have the gender support plan where every student who says, "Oh yes, I think I'm a girl today instead of a boy," has five staff members who are assigned to them for one aspect or another. And it, it becomes a thing that memorializes them among their peers. All of a sudden, instead of being 5% that identify or less, it's 20%. And that percent will continue to grow as long as they keep doing things like this.
And, and so then the conversation becomes, if you, if you celebrate, now, we cannot, they have every single right that every other American has under the Constitution, but no other rights beyond that. But I think that the, if they begin to celebrate this thing, it becomes for a very vulnerable portion of the population, the most vulnerable portion of the population, it could become, like you're saying, very attractive. Now, a cynic would say they're not trying to promote or turn your kids LGBTQ, but they, they make it so attractive and, and which is their prerogative, they're the government. If you don't like it, take your kids out of school or whatever you do, but you don't know. So you're not part of that dialogue, you're not part of that conversation, so you don't get to speak into it. And that becomes the dangerous part, I think, for parents' rights. And that is, where I would fall particularly is, I need to be a seat at this table as well as a parent in Pasco County. And my kids go to public school, I need to, I need to know what's going on. Now, in my case, I may be a little more plugged into my kids than some parents, like we talked about, single parents working two jobs. It's very hard to keep up with all this. And you can't rely on a teenager particularly who can be a little manipulative. I don't know if you know any teenagers, but they can manipulate and keep secrets and spin the truth the way it suits them best when they're teenagers. That they, that it's, it would be almost impossible for a parent to stay plugged into this. And that is, I think, the danger. And that is where me, as, I as a parent, would rely on the school to let me know that these things are going on. So we have parent-teacher meetings, I have them all the time, I request them myself I request them myself at the report card time, uh, just to see how they're doing socially and academically. I can follow all year round, if there's anything, any kind of concerns. But they would then be legally not even be able to mention this at a parent-teacher meeting. Is that right?
Right, well, I would consider myself, Kevin, a parent who paid attention. I mean, I was at the open house. I was visiting, you know, every teacher, asking them how, you know, our daughter was doing and... I, I have to say, I was very naive, you know? I mean, she's, she's the, um, she's our fifth. So, you know, I've been involved in school and paying attention and raising my kids and going on field trips and being, you know, the homeroom mom and all that. And so when I saw the flyer that there was a club after school for kids regarding sexuality, I was shocked.
Yeah, and you wanna be part of the conversation.
You know, why, why is there an after-school club that, you know, is promoting sexuality and talking about all these different options in sexuality? And, you know, this is middle school. I was like, these are, you know, starting in sixth grade, you know? We're talking 11-year-olds and, you know, these children are innocent, you know? You know? Why should they be bombarded like that? And, um, you know, you think like, you know, just to follow up on what Terry said, you're, you know, this is popular, it's, you know, it's in the culture. So now, you know, not only do these children who say they have gender dysphoria, um, get a whole team of teachers, but now they have, they have teachers that will lie to their parents for them? So they have forms which you fill out, you know? Do you want your parents to know? If not, what do you want us to call you when your parents are around?
Yeah.
What do you want us to call you when, you know, they're not around? And, um, you can use any bathroom you want. I mean, we have gender fluidity. I mean, they could change their gender at any moment and no one can say anything. Um, in the 70-page guide, all the teacher was able to do is say, ask the child, are you sure you're in the right restroom? And if that child said yes, then there was nothing more they could do.
Right. And then what about the rights of everyone else in the restroom? So if there's 20 kids in the restroom or in a locker room changing and we, we, in a sense, hyper-protect the rights of the child struggling with, with gender identity, what have we done to, have, have we or have we not infringed on the rights of the other 19 kids in that room? That, I mean, my kids closed the bathroom door and, you know, they don't, "Dad, what are you doing?" And it's a boy, and I used to change his diaper. To me, it's no big deal, but to him, it's, he's 11-years-old and it's time not to, you know?
Yeah, well, I was reading a, um, article about, I believe it was a school in the UK where the girls, they, you know, organized a walkout, where there was 30 of them that walked out of the school. They didn't, they didn't want to be sharing the restroom in the locker rooms, you know, and exposing, you know, themselves and their monthly cycle and all that in front of these boys. And they didn't feel it was right, you know? They don't feel safe.
Well, what would you say to a, a school board member or, uh, the school board in general? By the way, we can, we can conclude that this was never brought up for public discussion officially at a school board meeting that you're aware of. Is that true?
That's correct.
All right. So what would you say then? What is the best way to help these kids that are struggling? We can't just forget about them or we can't marginalize them. How do we help these kids? Certainly, to me, this isn't the way, right? To celebrate it, can't, if, if the time comes when it, when it's not considered, uh, unhealthy, but I think largely it's an unhealthy psychosis of some sort that needs to be addressed. How do we help these kids? Is there anybody on board helping these kids? And my other question is, are school board in Pasco County, are elected officials, are they, are they unanimous on this or is there some dissension within the school board?
Yeah, so, couple, a couple...
There's two questions in there, yeah.
Well, yeah, and actually, there's a lot in trying to unpack that, but just in a, in a short period of time. Uh, first of all, they haven't spoken about it publicly, although because of the effort that we've exerted for the past year, there will be a meeting tomorrow of the superintendent and the chair of the school board and several people from our group. So that meeting will take place tomorrow, and this is something that just came up. Uh, and actually, similarly, we've had the same kinds of conversations in Hillsborough County because of the pressure from the people saying, you, we don't, you know, we want something to be done about this. There will, we'll see what happens, what comes out of those meetings, and I'll be interested in, if you're interested in getting back with you on it. But, uh, there is no such thing as gender identity. That's, I mean, there, that's just a, a social construct. You are either a male or a female. The, this whole gender identity thing is just, it's a made-up concept. It's an ideology. It's a belief. There's no science to it. So what children who are struggling with their sexuality need is counseling. That's what they need. They don't need somebody to encourage them to take, uh, hormones that are gonna make them sterile. They don't need people to encourage them to have a good breasts removed or, uh, you know, other good body parts removed or added or whatever it is. They need counseling. And because the, the people on the other side of this issue, and, and let me back up real quick. You said, how does this happen? Here's how it happens. You get a few highly-placed people who are highly motivated toward the other agenda, towards the LGBTQ promotion agenda. They get into high, into, into, uh, positions of authority, positions where they have a voice, and they begin making their voice heard. And then anyone who stands against them, and Gloria Ann has found this really recently, I've been doing this for 25 years, so you can't call me anything that I haven't been called, but they start marginalizing. So you're a homophobe, or you're a, whatever kind of a phobe, or you're a bigot, or you're a hater. So they wanna silence us because the truth is what really needs to be heard, but they know if the truth is heard, then it's gonna expose their lies. So that's how all of this takes place.
So then we end up with an ideology that, that flourishes in the dark and, and withers in the light. So, and this is part of the problem on both sides of the issue, by the way, whether you're left in polit- politically-left or politically-right, we tend to, to have intellectual bubbles that we live in and, and we only speak to. We see it amazingly, uh, in politics where they're shocked that people disagree with them once their, their policy, the Green New Deal's a good example of it. Uh, the, that made perfect sense in some, in some think tank, but when you put it, when you bring it out into public, then, and it gets picked apart, uh, people lose their minds because they're never, they're, they don't really have a consensus, uh, of civil discourse or develop any kind of consensus on policy, but these things are all developed internally. And I think that's a big part of what we're seeing here. And that, that should be, that, by the way, should be concerning to all parents and not just parents whose kids struggle with this stuff. Uh, we need to, uh, we need to be able to have this conversation civilly and do what's in best interest of the kids. And at the end of the day, my worry is, uh, just doing this, just doing this, uh, to self-aggrandize or to feel like you're a pioneer in any kind of, uh, movement like this. I understand the lore of that. I understand the lore of these kids wanting to be involved and it might be the same as a kid getting involved in, in gangs and stuff like that, that it is, there is an inclusion, a celebration, uh, uh, power that comes along with it, that gives them an insane amount, by the way, legally leverage over their parents, which I think is a big, probably a big draw to some of these kids that are really struggling with this. We need to do what's best for these kids and not just what's best for academia. These kids should be what we're most concerned about, and that's the part that really begins to worry me.
Well, Gloria Ann mentioned earlier, there are three prongs to what we're doing, and she spoke to two of them. And the third one, we've been kinda talking around, but I think that, if you wanted to tell about parent, really, parents' rights and protecting parents' rights and the importance of that to the kids, I think that that's something that's important here.
What do we think of that? In other words, is, is the focus here of this movement to do away with LGBT community or is the focus to, uh, help that community and, and to protect parents' rights?
Well, we have to put, we have to put anything that involves sexuality with the children and point it back to the parents, because it's the parents' job to guide them through that. It's not, it's not the education system to guide our children through sexuality. It's their job to educate our children. So what, so what the other side does is they, if your child is struggling with these things, and it doesn't even need to be gender dysphoria, it could be any, any one of the, you know, sexuality preferences or whatever, they, they will tell the parent, if the parent does get involved, that they have to do things a certain way or their child is gonna commit suicide.
Yeah.
But nobody's talking about the fact that affirming children, especially in their gender dysphoria, what, what, what is that actually doing? I mean, that's pointing them down, um, a whole lifetime of hormone blockers, dangerous drugs that, you know, we know scientifically cause stroke, heart attack, osteoporosis, you know? These hormones are necessary in development of children, in brain development, yet they're pushing to have children given these drugs at younger and younger ages. They're pushing to have their, um, body parts removed and to have these sex surgeries before they're even 18, when we know that, um, the frontal lobe of the brain isn't even fully developed till they're 24. That's why they're minors. That's why they need parents. So why are they keeping this secret? They're saying because these children are gonna commit suicide if their parents are involved and if their parents disagree. But as parents, and, you know, I've had five teenagers already, um, I, we disagree with each other quite a lot.
Yeah, yeah.
Right? And so you can't use the disagreement of a parent and child as something that you need to protect that child from and bring in suicide when there really isn't, um, evidence to support that. And there's a lot of people out there, um, saying that the whole suicide thing is more of a scare tactic than reality.
And there is, there is, by the way, in the adult community, it's, it's like 44% suicide rate in the transgender community, and it doesn't even get below 40 post-transition. So once they have the operation and transition, uh, from what I understand, the suicide rate is still there. So is the gender confusion a product of the depression?
It's actually higher, it's actually higher among adults who have had the surgery done than it is among those in the early stages.
And one study I heard about, it goes down to like 23%, but they only took a picture of the, they only took a sample from the first year. And then, once the honeymoon period's over and the, the celebration is over and you're not being lifted up as a, as a champion anymore, and it's just you and the four walls and the decision you made, uh, and, and then everything that you struggled with before the transition is still there, uh, it's tragic. So the, these kids, for me, if, if a parent wants to allow their kids to go to this, that's fine. If they don't, that's also fine with me. Uh, we've got a call coming in. Let's wonder who it is. Wanna, wanna take a phone call?
Sure.
If I can do it right? Hey caller, you're on the air with the God Logic Project. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Uh, you don't have to give your name, but we'd like you to speak into the conversation. All, our guests can hear you now. We can hear you on YouTube. What would you like to say?
Hi, I just wanted to let you know, I'm an administrator for a school, um, and actually, I don't wanna use my name because of the circumstances. I don't necessarily agree with everything that comes down, uh, from the school district. However, I have to implement it. So if the school board says, in my, um, Pinellas County, I work for Pinellas County as an administrator, if they say, okay, you will provide alternative restroom facilities for those who feel like they need it, I have to do it.
Right. So you, you have no more choice than the parents have, regardless of which side of the, of the equation you fall on. Uh, they, you don't, our school, our teachers and local, uh, school leaders are, still have to succumb to the will of the school board. Is that about accurate?
That's exactly accurate. And I, I also am a mother of four children and, hi Kevin, I know you know who I am, but so I'm, I'm a, I am not a rookie at this. And I know how kids are. And when I have a third grader come to me and say, you know, I think I'm bisexual, well, I think back when I was in third grade, I didn't know if I liked boys or girls. I didn't think about it.
Yeah, yeah.
I was doing way other things, but because we sexualize our, our children and they, they see all the things that, that, you know, we all know that they see. Um, I just feel like I'm against the wall because I have a certification, even principals have certifications that we have, and we can lose those.
If you're not, if you're not, if you don't, uh, adhere to those guidelines, then, then you could lose your job, tenure or not, I would suppose.
Exactly. Just like this teacher you were talking about earlier who was not comfortable, of course, monitoring a locker room. And just because I don't agree with it doesn't mean anything. It doesn't mean anything.
Yeah, and that is, uh, so that becomes a kind of a totalitarian, kinda, uh, big brother type. It's a creepy situation when you think about it. And do you think, do you think they have their, you know, are their hearts in the right place with this or is it, is it, uh, is it ego-driven? Get from the inside, what do you think drives this kinda thing?
I think it's fear. I think some of it is fear. Uh, people don't, it's such a litigious society that we live in. If you don't agree with everyone else and you're accused of being homophobic, which I'm not.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just third, fourth, sixth, sixth grade, how do you know? And why, why is it now being shoved down my throat?
Are you...
Down my throat and my other...
So the, so it, there's some angst within the school boards, uh, for this too. Are all of our school boards elected officials? Is that how it works? Is, is there any dissension? Should we just vote them all out or should we make this a big public issue? Or what's the answer? Uh, is, if there's 12 school board members, can we have, can we have six and six somehow? Or what's the answer? How do we protect, obviously, people working within the school system and the parents send in their kids in these school systems? It's absolutely insane.
So there are odd numbers of school board members.
Stay on the line caller, I wanna get back with you if you can.
Yeah, and actually, could I ask the caller a quick question?
Yes, if you don't mind. Do you mind taking a question real quick?
This is Terry.
Hi Terry.
So my question is real quick, you mentioned Pinellas County and bathrooms. So do you have this going on in Pinellas County where boys are going into the girls or girls are going into the boys?
Uh, last year I had a situation where I had a student in eighth grade who did not feel comfortable going to the girls' restroom even though she was a girl. And I had to make, um, I had to find another bathroom, which was actually a staff bathroom, and only allowed her to use that for the remainder of the year until she went to high school.
And, and so that's, actually, in my mind, that's probably a good solution. I- in high school, would she be allowed to go into the boys or is she still gonna use a, a, a single-user facility?
I honestly don't know what happened after that.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I appreciate, I appreciate you taking time out of your day. Could you take one more quick question?
Absolutely.
Hi, um, I just have, I just have a statement for all administrators and, um, teachers in your position. Um, I just read a book by Rebecca Fredericks. Um, it's called Standing Up to Goliath. And, um, she's been fighting this in California for a long time, and she really explains how this is happening and how this is coming down from the national, National Teachers Unions and the State Teachers Unions. And she's trying to educate teachers and administrators on how they can stand up and what their rights are. And she has a website. It's called ForKidsInCountry.org. And I would just suggest that, um, you check that out too, 'cause I think it could be really helpful.
And Kevin, to come back real quickly to your question about, uh, these being elected officials, they are elected. So they got elected, they said certain things that they were gonna do when they were elected. You can bet that not one of them in any county said, uh, we're gonna teach your kids that boys can go into girls and girls can go in the boys, or we're gonna teach your kids about how to use a condom or whatever the things are that are going on.
Right.
They're, so, under the table, they're trying to sexualize our kids in a mul- in a variety of ways, and it's not just the sex ed curriculum or not just the, this, uh, gender ideology issue, but it's in all, all of the curriculum. This is pervasive throughout the curriculum. So we need to take a look at, who are the school board members and where do they stand? And if they haven't spoken up against it, then we need to find somebody to run against them and see if we can't replace the school board members with people who will stand up for the rights of our kids.
And the superintendent.
And for the, and a superintendent. In, in, in Pasco County, the superintendent's elected. In Hillsborough County, he's, he's elected by the school board. But irrespective, in both places, the school board sets policy.
Right.[1627.65]
So we need to get people in positions on the school board, where the policies that are being set respect parents' rights, and respect children.
And it's, first, let me, let me thank you, caller, if you're still there for calling in. I'm going to let you go, and I appreciate you, and thank you for your support of the God Logic Project.
Absolutely. Have a good day, guys.
All right, God bless. Thank you. By the way, if you'd like to call in, it's a little bit awkward, because I managed the whole thing here myself, but you can see, you can remain anonymous, you can speak your piece, you certainly can email me, any questions or comments, at GodLogicProject@gmail.com. I'm watching the comments right now, on, below the, below the screen on YouTube, and I've got another call coming in, I'm going to try to catch, and I appreciate you guys for participating in the conversation. Hi, you're live on the God Logic Project. You want to go on the air?
Hmm.
Hello, can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. What's, what's on your mind, caller?
Well, good afternoon to everyone, Gloria Ann, Terry, it's Jana.
Hi, how are you?
How are you? How are you, Kim?
I'm wonderful.
Still, this, this is something that still just breaks my heart. And one thing, you know, I hate to be away, and I hate that, you know, I'm not able to stand there with Gloria Ann and the rest of them at this moment, but it's still, it's so bad, even with the recent, you know, things that have been going on in Chasco Middle School with the teacher, I just don't understand what's next. Like, what, what is it going to take?
So the concern becomes, then, where does this end? And that is, that is concerning, but the, I think the topic on the table, and by the way, we, there's so much we can talk about on this, we're obviously going to have to do a part two about, on this in a couple of weeks, or maybe a part three as well, we'll have a series, because there's a lot to talk about here. But I think the topic today, Jana, is, where do, do parents have the right to be part of this conversation in Pasco County or not? I would imagine you think, obviously, they do, and I know you, and I know your background, so this is, this is a topic I think that, that everybody should speak into, or what do you think?
I would completely agree. You know, Terry and both Gloria Ann know my background, majority of people do, and they know that I've stand at the school board with them, and with the meetings, and even live in that lifestyle, you know, I don't understand how, even when people have lived it, and stood in their face, and said, hey, look, this is the things that actually, that you're backing. And these things that you're backing are horrible. There's things that, I'm saying, that you don't understand, that, that are being pushed, and then, once they do get into that society, then it's worse than they could even imagine, because they've never been in it or lived it.
Yeah, and so, they, I think their hearts are probably in the right place, but I don't think their motives are quite right. So I think that if we had a school board, I'll let you go, caller, and I thank you, by the way, for calling in and participating, and I'll, obviously, I'll see you soon, but, or I'll talk to you soon, but thank you for calling in.
Bye, Jana.
Bye.
Bye-bye. So then, do we have, we have a situation where I think the, I would guess that the majority of the people out there would want to be part of this conversation. I certainly, I can't think of a parent that would say, it's fine to do this behind my back, I don't need to know. Now, the argument on the other side might be, and I would like somebody that is from the school board, that thinks this is a great idea to call in, but the, are we, are we protecting these kids? Are we wrestling away just rights from the parents? Their argument would be, you know, these kids are in danger from their parents, too. And in a rare case, I think that's probably true, but it's probably anecdotal. I don't think, I can't think of a parent that I know, that I've, and I've talked about this conversation with them, where they would, they'd say, well, I'll disown them, or I'll kill them, or whatever it is. I know that's not me. I mean, I would get through it, you know, probably not the way the school board wants me to get through, but I'll deal with it the way I think it's best dealt with. That would not be, you know, not be celebrated, would be my policy, my personal policy on it. But then, are we in a situation now where, where the government is forcing an agenda on the people, and the people are largely unaware of it?
The answer to that question is yes, and an illustration is, we've done, I'll just call them demonstrations, for the sake of argument, at several schools here in Pasco County. So we've given flyers to, to the folks who were dropping off or picking up their kids. And we've had tremendous uptick in the number of hits on the website, hits on the Facebook page, and people who are actively engaging in, on those platforms, because they now know something about what's going on, and they know they need to take a look.
Right. And as a parent who does become informed, and wants to get involved, and they believe in the mission, you know, that we're doing to protect the children, you know, they can help us out. They can put a bumper sticker on, you know, the back window of their car, they can come to a demonstration with us, and help pass out flyers to other parents, you know, they can purchase a T-shirt, you know, wear it around town. And so, you know, we're doing everything we can to, you know, just get the word out to parents.
Well, I've got your website, ProtectPascoChildren.org up on the screen now. Folks can reach you at information?
Info.
Info@ProtectPascoChildren.com, and we will-
Dot org.
Dot org.
Dot org, yeah, I keep saying dot com. In fact, I even typed it the first time. I told you, while I'm blessed with stunning good looks, I'm not terribly bright.
Well, dot com will get you to the website, but the email is dot org.
Right. So we want to use ProtectPascoChildren.org, if you want to, if you want to help, if you want to help with the process of opening up this conversation publicly, and I think, for the first step at least, it needs to become public. So we need to get it out from the back rooms, and the think tanks, the left-wing think tanks, and we need to put it out. And with, you know, protecting the kids when there's, when there's need to protect the children, certainly, from the parents, but I don't think that's a very large percentage of the situation here. And you might bring up an anecdotal example of something, of a parent being violent towards a kid, struggling with this, and I don't think that doesn't happen, but it's, that by itself is not enough to infringe upon the rights of everybody that is affected by this policy. So we're going to put up, we're going to, we're going to wrap it up, because we are actually, we're about, we're over 50 minutes into it. So this is something that we're going to have to talk about again, I think, because I think that people need to digest this, they need to get more information. So certainly, ProtectPascoChildren.org is a place to begin. You can contact Gloria Ann at info@ProtectPascoChildren.org. And then also, Terry, what's your, what's your email address? How could they reach out to you?
Sure, it's Terry, T-E-R-R-Y, at Terry, T-E-R-R-Y, Kemple is my last name, K-E-M-P-L-E.com. So it's just Terry@TerryKemple.com.
And there, they can reach out to you, and you are with the, what's the foundation that you're with?
Sure, Community Issues Council. It's actually a local ministry that my wife and I formed. Our mission is to promote Judeo-Christian values by educating and uniting the church to be able to engage our community in the issues of the day. So we really try to focus on things that would have an impact on our ability to live out our faith. And this is one of them.
Okay, so it's Terry@TerryKemple.com, and there, they can reach out to you, pro or con, yea or nay, they can, they can begin to have the conversation with you, and be included in this conversation with you. The, also, you can always go to GodLogicProject.com, and contact me through there, or contact me at GodLogicProject@gmail.com. If you have, by the way, if you want to be part of the God Logic Project, if you have a story to tell, if you're passionate about a ministry, or a business, or even a social issue like this, and you want to be on the, guest on the God Logic Project, email me at GodLogicProject@gmail.com. As always, I ask you guys to subscribe, and to invite your friends to subscribe, and more importantly, that's important to me, and it really is, but more importantly is that everyone become part of this conversation. So while we can't have this conversation, maybe publicly at a school board meeting, we can certainly have it here. So if you agree with me, if you disagree with me, and the folks in the room today, that's fine. If you can have a civil discourse, if you can have this conversation without name-calling and attacking guests, I want to hear from all sides, and regardless of whether you agree with me or not, you have a seat at this table, we need to remember that. And I thank you guys, by the way, for tuning in, supporting the God Logic Project thus far. So if we're going to close with, Terry, if we're going to close with a parting thought, what would, what do we want somebody to take away to be from this? What do you want a parent that may be hearing about this for the first time, what can they do from here?
Sure. I think the most important thing for parents in Pasco County is to go to ProtectPascoChildren.org, because there's an opportunity there to sign up, there's an opportunity to get information that you need, in order to be able to take, you know, to take a responsible step. If you live, excuse me, if you live in Penellas County, or Hillsborough County right now, just email me, Terry@TerryKemple.com, and you'll get plugged in to whichever county you live in, because we've got activity going on in all three counties.
Gloria Ann, how would you, how would you, what would you send somebody away with? What information you want to show, what you have there, and how can they get more involved in helping get this conversation brought out into the light?
Well, my passion in my heart is to protect children, and so I don't see it as, you know, just protecting those children that aren't part of the LGBTQ community, I see it as protecting all children. And my heart really goes out to the children that are struggling with their sexuality, and that are struggling with gender identity, and we want to do what's best for them. You know, we want to take, you know, when science and studies say that, you know, up to 98% of children that are confused about their gender would go on to live healthy, happy lives, once they go through puberty as their biological sex, why are we, why are we pressuring them? Why are we sending down them, them down a road that they can't come back from? So, you know, I'm fighting just as much, if not more, for those children as for the rights, the privacy rights, and the safety of all the children. And so I just want parents to, you know, come together and unify, you know, and say, you know, we need to protect the innocence of these children.
Yeah, and this is, I, I'm not, I personally think sex education is important, teenage pregnancy, huge problem, single-parent homes, huge problem in America. I think it has added to the problems we have. It is, we, I think we, in a sense, wanted a godless society, now we got one, and we don't know how to deal with it. So I think that the breakdown of the family unit is a very painful part of the new heritage in the United States, and I'd like, and I've participated by that, by the way, in my own home, I raised my son by myself, and, but I recognize the problem with that. I didn't recognize it, of course, when I was part of the problem, but now, hopefully, as part of the solution, I recognize that, and want to encourage folks to, as always, as a pastor, I'm going to encourage you to, if you're already a Christian and not hyper-religious, rely on the Word. Pray, use logic. I'm completely all right with using logic in spiritual matters, that's how I came to faith, faith in the first place, that's how the God Logic Project was born. I know that there's, there's most, there's a lot of stuff we're never going to understand, but there are things that we can understand, that are fairly reasonable to believe in. If you have questions about that stuff, GodLogicProject@gmail.com. But be part of the conversation, don't be afraid of your faith, let your faith grow. There is, I think a part of the problem is, whether we believe in God, whether the viewers believe in a God, or don't believe in a God, or Christianity, or not Christianity, the problem is, the conversation is being controlled by, by the secular atheist, humanist side of the conversation. And so you're, you're not starting at zero, you're kind of starting at a deficit. So you're getting a lot of negativity poured into you about the possibility of an intelligent designer of a God. So it's, the onus is on you to participate in things like this, and participate, do the research for yourself, read scripture, read books, make your own decision. And we've taught, I think, a big problem in society is, we've taught kids what to think, and we forgot to teach them how to think. And they no longer think for themselves, but they tend to think, they tend to think in what feels good, and rather than what does good terms, to steal, to steal someone else's line.
Well, can I add one more?
Yeah.
A thought there, is, a lot of it is that our kids have been really indoctrinated in the schools. Gloria Ann said that earlier. This purpose of the schools is to educate our kids, math, science, history, English, it's not to indoctrinate them into whatever the ideology is that they want to be, that the educators want to indoctrinate them into. So that's a big part of the problem, because at that age, they're really easily impressioned, and especially when there's peer pressure involved. So what you have is a lamination of lowering, and I, lamination builds up, but it's the same idea, only it's taking down, the, basically, the values, the structure of the society that kids think is okay. So then, those kids graduate from college, they become leaders in the community, so now the standard that was lowered through their process is now lower, because they're the ones who are setting the standard, and then it just continues to degrade. So that whole standard by which we live has been degrading for 40 or 50 years, through this, you know, this continuous process of changing the way people think about what's right and wrong. It's just basically, what is right and what is wrong.
Yeah. And so, we're going to close out now, I want to thank you guys, I want to thank you guys for being here in the studio with me. I know it's a lot of work, a lot of going out of your way in the middle of a weekday to get here, I appreciate it, I really do want to do it again, so I think we should keep in touch.
Well, thank you for having us.
We can take the feedback that we get, hopefully, in the next week or two, and move this conversation forward, maybe. If you guys, if you guys like to see that, make a comment in the comments section below,